I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Jared, will you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you for some air. Councilman Colacott.
Here.
Councilman Fassinelli.
Present.
Councilman Nelson.
Here.
Mayor Proten Barnett.
Yep.
Mayor Mills. Present. Today, I will ask Danny Daniel Alford of Troop 543 Salem Lutheran Church, could you please lead us in the pledge, sir?
Please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Danny. This time, I'd like to have all those in the audience, please silence your cellphones or turn them to a position of vibrate or whatever is to not disturb the meeting. The council and the staff would like to welcome to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, there are blue slips in the back here to fill out and hand it to the city clerk, which is Jared sitting over to my right. You can see these in the back, they're on both sides. And the speaker cards will need to be filled out with your name and the topic you'd like. This way, we address them at the appropriate time for the different agenda items we've had published for a week. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. First tonight, we'd like to have a presentation. And this is a presentation that we have tonight. This is going blue this month to recognize that September next month is the World Alzheimer's Awareness Month, a time to recognize the 47 million people globally afflicted with the Alzheimer's disease. It's the most common form of dementia, and it is fatal. Currently, there's no way to prevent, cure, or slow the progression of Alzheimer's, and it is the fourth leading cause of death in Orange County. Since 1982, Alzheimer's Orange County has been Orange County's center for Alzheimer's resources. They are dedicated to providing quality care and support services to the thousands of residents of Orange County who are affected by Alzheimer's disease or other related dementia, and also partnering with local researchers to populate clinical trials to help find a cure. Alzheimer's Orange County is based in Irvine and is available to the more than 84,000 residents in Orange County currently living with Alzheimer's disease or, again, related dementia. At this time, I'd like to call up Kathleen Jennet, and she is a citizen here at Villa Park. Kathleen?
Hello. On behalf of Alzheimer's Orange County, I want to thank Mayor Mills and the members of the Villa Park City Council for acknowledging the work of Alzheimer's Orange County. I'm grateful for your help in raising awareness about the devastating impact of Alzheimer's disease and related dementias. Since 1982, Alzheimer's Orange County has been dedicated to providing quality care, free services, education, and support for people and families coping with dementia. If you or anyone you know is in need of our services, please reach out to our 24/7 helpline, staffed by social work professionals, by calling 844-H-E-L-P-A-L-Z or visiting our website, www.ALZOC.org. Additionally, we raise our own local budget revenue every year, so we invite you to participate in our mission by joining us at our Walks for Alzheimer's coming up this fall. Please visit our Walk for ALZ website at www.ALZOC.org/Walk to learn more about this year's Alzheimer's Walk. Again, I wanted to thank you, Mayor, members of Villa Park City Council for joining Alzheimer's Orange County as we recognize Alzheimer's World Awareness Month and the 47 million people worldwide living with Alzheimer's disease.
Thank you, Kathy. This time, we'd like to present a proclamation to Kathy and also to Kristen. Please come up. One, two, and three. Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it very much.
If I could ask Kathy, if there is a walk that does come up that is within, you know, around Villa Park, maybe you can email Jared or email one of us on the council, and we can get it out to our residents so they can participate, or possibly any of the council members might want to do that also.
That would be great.
So, you know, I know we could go to the website, but if something comes up that's close by, if you wanted, somebody can alert us, that would be great.
Sure, I will send you something. And our close by one would be Angel Stadium.
Oh, that's pretty close. That'll work.
And it's November 27th.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, I'll send it to you.
Thank you. Now, it's time for a presentation. So, when we typically start our meeting this year, could we have a report from the Orange County Sheriff's Department? Lieutenant Gunzel?
Thank you very much. Okay, crime report for July 16. We had six Part 1 crimes in detail for... There was one vehicle burglary on Feather Hill. The loss on that one was a laptop and a purse. They were moved from the front seat, and items were found in plain sight. There was one grand theft on Loma. On that one, a shotgun and a wallet and sunglasses and an iPad were taken from an unlocked vehicle. Yes, unlocked vehicle. There was two petty thefts. One was on Serrano. A watch and prescription pills were taken from that residence, and the victim suspects a friend took them. And then on Canute Circle, a ring was taken. It was left on the bathroom counter. Victim believes it could be a guest or a carpet cleaner of the house. There was two acts of vandalism. Went on at the high school, suspect threw a bottle at the rear of a victim's vehicle. And then on Pamela, suspect removed a front license plate of a vehicle. That one's very unusual. Yes, an unlocked vehicle and a shotgun. Yes, that is correct. I still see the question still on your face.
Unlocked vehicle is a very common comment.
Yes, very common here. Any questions for me?
I have a comment, and I've kind of been harping on it since I've gotten on council, but, again, it's coming up. The amount of people that run the red light at Center and Villa Park Road, as well as Wanda and Catella. And when, how can we get some sort of patrol out there? I don't know, radar gun, a police car, something? Because there's really never anyone there to look at the people running the red lights. And it happens almost at every single light. So, the general rule is if you cross that street, turns red, you wait. You count to five, and you go. And it's become more prevalent as I certainly have two teenage drivers now that I'm in the car with, you know, scared out of my mind. I've got white knuckles, and I won't let them go until they count to five. So...
Well, as far as getting someone out there, it's just a matter of getting the information to me, and I'll get it out, because, you know, Spencer will be out there. It's just, he's pulled in 15 different directions by me about, hey, make sure you go over here, check this. And so, if it becomes an issue, he'll go out there, and you know Spencer, he'll start writing tickets. And, you know, he's...
They're running it. I mean, they know they can run it. It's a big street. They, you know, I'm not even talking about the speed. Some of them just go through at 20 miles an hour. They, I mean, they're just driving Miss Daisy across the street. And there hasn't been any. If possibly you can do that, it has nothing to do with school starting. These are commuters. So, it's...
Right. I'll send an email soon as I sit down, and probably tomorrow you'll see Spencer and probably our school. Brian Benz will be out there too, no doubt, so...
I appreciate that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just one additional comment if there's no more questions. Tonight's my last Villa Park City Council meeting. I've decided to take a position at another place, and I'd be happy to speak offline with you, but not on public. But, yeah, I'm leaving next month, so by the time the next meeting comes out, I won't no longer be with the Sheriff's Department, so...
Oh, really?
Yeah, I want to let you guys know that that was forthcoming, so...
Well, hopefully it's congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. It's 30 years. I didn't cut it short, so 30 years at one place is a long time. So, time to go try and something new, so...
Well, thank you.
Randy Black didn't even know. I talked to him yesterday. He didn't even know that, so...
Well, thank you for being here with us. Art of Fire. Farman Blair.
Council Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to report out on July's fire department responses to Villa Park. We had 37 total responses to Villa Park. Fifty-six, 57% of those were EMS calls. And that's pretty typical for us. We had no actual fire calls whatsoever, so that's good news. Do want to mention, we have 96 OCFA personnel still out of county assisting on the fires throughout the state. We've been able to do that. That's a pretty high number. We were at the height of the fire up in Los Angeles area. We were a little over, about a little over 110 of our folks. And we've been able to do that without downstaffing any of our fire stations in Orange County. So, that's a lot of hard work by our folks. And I'll close my comments with saying thanks to Lieutenant Gunzel for the time I've had with you. It's been great working with you, and good luck on your next endeavors. Any questions?
Thank you. OC mosquito and vector control district.
Last meeting was a very interesting meeting. Even though we did not have aerospraying on the agenda, there were over 100 people there to protest aerospraying. We had over 40 speakers that spoke on it in the public comments section. So, we spent a considerable amount of time hearing about aerospraying. It's interesting, because several months ago, there was an item on the agenda to allow the district manager to make the decision on aerospraying. We had a similar protest at that time, so the board voted not to give that power to the general manager. But later on, they set up a committee made of executive committee, the chairs of each committee, and people from the cities that would be affected by aerospraying to make that decision. And fortunately, they haven't made that decision so far. In fact, at that time, they also took aerospraying out of the budget, put more emphasis on education, put more emphasis on prevention. And still, we get a lot of feedback on aerospraying. And I continue to get emails every day on it as well. But other than that, the staff gave a report on update on West Nile virus, and it indicated they tested 3,000 mosquito samples and found 224 of them to be positive for West Nile virus. These samples were collected in 25 Orange County cities. Last year at this time, they tested 2,800 samples and found 145 to be West Nile virus positive. And there's been three human West Nile virus infections underscoring the importance of mosquito breeding and bite prevention. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman.
I have a question on the vector. It wasn't on the agenda, but, I mean, I received emails, and it was all over social media. Why did they show up? What occurred?
I have no idea why they showed up. There was nothing on agenda about it. We've not had anything about doing any spraying, but all of a sudden, this, we saw it spring up on social media all over. We were expecting them there because they were monitoring social media and seeing it. But there was nothing on agenda for that.
And I know that they did do aerial spraying in Santa Ana, and they did it on, was your meeting on a Tuesday or Wednesday? I'm not sure what it was.
Thursday.
Thursday, but they didn't call it aerospraying. They called it something else. So, there was spraying in the city of Santa Ana. I know. It was interesting. They sprayed over a very, very small...
They do have some trucks that go out and spray. That might have been that type of spraying.
That's not aerial spraying, though.
That's not aerial spraying. They do it...
Oh, you mean when they do the gutters?
Yeah, well, they also have special vehicles that have a fan, and they sprays it up about 15 feet.
I think that might be what they did.
That's probably what they did. They did that in La Habra as well, because last month, they found a lot of infected mosquitoes in La Habra.
Is that for West Nile? Or for the Z...
West Nile.
West Nile.
And they did spraying in the park in La Habra, and they also did a lot of spraying around homes. They'd go and ask the people if they could spray in their backyard and their front yard. And they sprayed those, and allowed them to do that. But that's a different type of spraying.
We did have a resident last year contact West Nile virus. We don't know where they caught it from. So, it is certainly something that, you know, has been brought home here. So, it is, it's something that's serious.
Yeah, I think we had nine deaths in Orange County last year, wasn't it, for West Nile virus?
Yeah, eight or nine, yeah, something like that.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Council? Okay. I'm even getting emails too.
Yeah, y'all are.
I've been on the vector for a while.
He's still on the list.
I'm still on the list. They took my picture down on my email. Okay. Orange County Sanitation District, they hosted an open house on the 13th, which is about a week and a half ago, which is a very interesting event, where they also opened up the water district, which is adjacent to the sanitation district. So, the gate that separates them was open, and they had basically like an open fair for the public to come. And we have announced it here several times. A lot of people showed up. A lot of employees showed up with their families so they could also see what, you know, mom and dad do during the daytime when they're at work at the sanitation district, and all of the technology that they have there, which is quite, you know, they are the world leaders in reclaiming water from every drop of water that they can reuse. They're doing it at that plant. And also, they're working on the same thing at the Huntington Beach Plant as well, which is further down river, which is all by the Santa Ana River. Also, there, this month was August, so there was no administration meeting. But tomorrow night is the board meeting, and I'll be attending that. And that's my report for the Orange County Sanitation District. Any questions? Okay. OC Library Advisory Board? No report. Budget and Finance?
There was no meeting.
No meeting? Community Development and Public Safety?
Had a pretty quiet meeting, just one minor variance.
Yep. Human Resources?
No meeting.
No meeting? Schools Advisory?
We didn't have a meeting, but I do have a report on the schools. What we have is, we did have schools start today. Saravella started the 7th graders today, and tomorrow, all of OUSD does begin school. So, everyone be a little patient coming out of your house. If you have an alternate route, try and avoid the Center, you know, Serrano, Villa Park Road. Try and take your opposite directions. We have, you know, at least 90 new kindergartners coming in, which means there could be 90 new parents coming in who may not be familiar with the streets. So, just want to make sure that everyone is a little patient for two weeks. After about two weeks, it does settle down. I did go to the schools and just remind the staff that enforcement does continue year-round and that there is no reprieve for the first two weeks as in the past years. We didn't have a reprieve last year either, but that there isn't going to be any sort of a grace period. If an officer sees them doing something incorrectly, they will ticket them or stop them. So, I did want them to at least let their, let all the parents know that so they didn't get any tickets. And just as a reminder, when the school does start on Wednesdays, there is late start at Saravella, and there is early release at both elementary schools. So, they get out at 12:15. So, the roads are a little bit lighter on Wednesdays. It's always a nice day to travel through those areas. There is a bond measure coming up on our ballot. It is final. It's approved. Make yourself educated. Council, make yourself educated. And I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that that is there. There'll be material coming through there, and if everyone wants to read that so they can vote accordingly, that probably would be best. And it does have to do with our high school. All four high schools, but particularly, you know, for us, Villa Park High School is included in that bond.
Any questions? Seeing none. Law Enforcement Advisory, John?
Evening, Mayor Mills, council members. My name is John Whitman. I'm the vice chair of the LEAC. I'd like to start by congratulating Lieutenant Gunzel on his retirement and thank him for all the contributions and leadership he's provided to our residents, and also all your assistance that you've provided to the LEAC as well. Really hope you have a great retirement. Enjoy it. I'm here to present some notes on the meeting from August 1st. Unfortunately, I was not present. I was on vacation, so I'm not going to be able to give you a lot of specifics. I'm basically reading off notes here, so I'll do my best on that. First item we had, we invited Tom and Danny White to our meeting, and we presented Mr. White with a proclamation. That was for his generous donation of the monies that were used to purchase the two plain white units that are now being utilized by the PSRs and the sheriff's reserves. It was a huge donation, and it's, we're already starting to see some great benefits that it's providing to the city. We approved the minutes from the July 5th meeting. And we also briefly discussed and talked about the review of the proposed no standing stopping restrictions. We respect the council's decision to vote that motion down. We also had Nikki Krop, president of Serrano PFO, that was present. And she basically was there to ask for clarification regarding the parking restrictions on Feather Hill and Dodson Way. And since the LEAC's a think tank, we don't set policy, we punted that, or actually, not we, because I wasn't there, but Chair Rossini punted that question over to the Mayor Mills, city manager Jared, Lieutenant Rob Gunzel, and Councilman Bob Colacott. Basically, what they were, what she was told is that to respect the parking restrictions as far as parking by permit only. And basically, they were discouraged, parents were discouraged to use the street as a parking area to pick up and drop off their children. So, basically, what we had in place before, we left in place. And that was, that was the word that came down from city staff that was there. Lieutenant Gunzel went through and read the crime stats, which you heard tonight. We talked about the Community Emergency Response Team, the CERT program. Basically, Tom Dodge is looking at going, looking at the past CERT lists and seeing if those people are still active. If they're not, trying to collect the equipment and everything else that was, that was put out in the community at that time so we can kind of get a new list revamped and then figure out who needs training, who doesn't need training. They're, they are behind on refresher training, so that's something that needs to get rectified. Neighborhood Watch publicly thanked the sheriff's department for all their contributions to the community and their service they provide. And we had an update on the PSR program. Basically, Jay Wasserman, member of our LEAC, continuing to look at recruiting efforts to try to bring in more PSRs. As I mentioned before, we have the two white units that are now in service. They're doing vacation and patrol checks of the neighborhood. And the guidelines that were implemented and put together by Lieutenant Gunzel's staff as far as how to utilize the PSRs is a very thorough list. It's also been kind of taken by other cities that are looking to utilize our program as well. They've used some of the same ideas that were put into those guidelines for their own benefit as well. So, I think it's a great program, and it's having a lot of benefit. And then, as far as roadway engineering, the city's taken delivery of the protective ballards that we discussed being installed at Serrano and Nichols. The purpose of those was to basically protect people standing on the sidewalk there on the north side of the street there where the catwalk comes over from James there for any students there waiting to pass. So, the ballards are there just to protect the event that maybe a car goes through the intersection and goes into that area. Our next meeting will be September 19th here at City Hall. And so, that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Council? Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
I have one question.
Sure.
How many PSRs do you have now?
Last count I knew was two.
Okay.
Yeah. But we're actively recruiting. Hopefully, we'll get more.
Okay.
Isn't Jay recruiting some from outside of the city as well?
That was, yeah, I think, I think our original intent was to try to get local residents, but, you know, we're going to obviously get whoever we can. If that's, you know, if we can't get them within the city, then we'll reach outside if that's needed.
I guess the greater Villa Park area, right?
Exactly. Exactly. Yep. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Investment Advisory?
No meeting.
No meeting. Community Services Foundation? Any report?
Well, I went to that meeting. I happened to be in, around at that time, so I can let you know what occurred there. Now, Rick, you were there for a small portion of it also. Rick, you were there for a small portion of the meeting? The foundation?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I just want to, if you don't have anything to say.
No, nothing related to, kind of...
Well, let me let you know what's, what is going on there. They just had a great concert in the park. The Finians were, did play at the high school. There were about 500 people in attendance, most people we've ever had at any of our concerts. So, they had a great showing. It was a lively event. Everyone was happy, and it was really nice to see everyone out. It was a great night also. So, that was very successful. Walk with a Friend is Saturday, September 24th. It starts at 8 o'clock. If you're looking to adopt a dog, they will have dogs there for adoption for a very low amount. There will also be some vendors. And then, at 9:30, if you've brought your dog and you have a leash, you can walk. There's a 2K path that they take, and everyone will walk together, and that would be, they would really enjoy that if you'd like to do that. So, they will have a raffle also, and they're looking forward to walking with you. It's always been a successful event on that Saturday. One of the things that they asked me to bring back to council was the issue of dogs on OUSD property. So, I'm bringing it to council. What they have, they would request that possibly to remove the doggy walk bags that are along OUSD's fence, which is not our property. the doggy walk bags that are along OUSD's fence, which is not our property. What's happened is the foundation utilizes the school grounds, not supposed to bring dogs on there. And they don't want to use the, lose the ability to use the school grounds. So with the doggy walk bags on the outside of the fence, they feel that it's giving everyone the impression that you can bring the dogs on there. They like the doggy walk bags, they would just like them removed from the fence. So I bring that to you. It is a big concern because we don't have any parks here, and they do want to save whatever location they have to have their events. So if you know of anybody's taking their dogs on there, just be a little bit vocal. Jared, if you could take a look at that and see if there's someplace you can put it on Villa Park property, they would appreciate that. And as far as a few other issues, the day that I came, I tried to get into the meeting, and I couldn't because the doors were locked, but they were all in here meeting. Didn't know how they came through. They came in through the library. Nobody had a key. They didn't know they ever had to request a key in, and they brought up a very good point, that they kind of felt trapped in here because there was no emergency exit, because the library closes down, that door didn't open. I did direct them to the emergency exit back here, but they did have a very valid point that they couldn't get out. Now, no one knew they had to request a key, and I think we need to maybe just look at some procedures as far as our community meetings that occur in here, and make sure that they reserve the room, that they have a key in case something does show up, because when I left, I locked the door, and they were going to have to go through the back because I wasn't going to leave with my key. So just something that's kind of come through, and I just happened to walk through that meeting and find out that they were trapped. So maybe we can revisit that, Jared, in the policies, make sure that everyone has a key and that they can get out in case of a fire or an emergency. That would be great.
I have a question. Any questions from council? A question about the, the doggy bags. I would think that just people can stay off the grass, then they can walk, I mean, there's a lot of property here that is the school district. I think having the bags there is okay, but they want it off their fence, that's what they're saying?
Their request, the fence is OUSD's property. OUSD has not contacted us at all, at all. This is the perception, this is, their perception from the foundation is that if you've got the bag right there at the entrance on the fence, people think you can take your dog onto the property. So they've asked if we could move it off OUSD's fence and put it on someplace else, whether it be a standalone pole on our property, which is what we have now, so that people don't think they can take their dogs on there and do that, so.
Can't they just put the "no dog" sign and "no alcohol, fire"?
There is that there, it's right next to the door.
They got all those signs.
OUSD has those all over the place, they do, so.
Okay, all right.
I'm the messenger.
Thank you.
I want to make sure that everyone has, I've said what I was going to do.
Well, I have discussed this with Mike Christiansen, the superintendent. People have been bringing their dogs to both the high school as well as Saravilla Middle School to, you know, let their dogs play for years. When I, several years ago, I was in charge of maintaining the baseball fields, both the junior varsity and the varsity baseball fields over Villa Park High School, and the dogs were there all the time. Never was there a problem with people not picking up after their dogs. Anyway, I got a dog about a year ago, and I'm one of those people that brings his dog down to the fields at Saravilla, and I've got no many of those people, and there are a lot of people that go down there. It's not just a couple, it's quite a few. People come from all around, as far as Eisenhower Park and up in Anaheim Hills and so forth, because it's a very nice place, and it's very nice community activity for people to meet and let their dogs play together and, you know, and get to visit with other people in the community. So I think it's a, it's a good recreational outlet. Now, the people that use the fields are very defensive of the fields, and you'll see that everybody that uses those fields is very careful to pick up after their dogs. They all bring bags. And if they see, if they see an errant dropping that's not their own dogs, they'll pick it up because they want to take good care of the facility. And that's the way it's been there for, you know, with everybody that I've encountered down there. The type of riffraff that uses those fields include, you know, vice chancellors of local universities, college professors, OUSD faculty and staff and administrators, widows, widowers, you name it. The total cross-section of all the people around here, you know, that live in this general area, not just Villa Park, actually, most of the people that use the fields are, I asked them, are from, from Orange. But it's a real good cross-section of good people that, that use the, the fields to let their dogs run. Now, I mentioned, I met with Mike Christiansen probably around December or January, and I brought up the fact that, yeah, a lot of people use the, the fields, and I'd spoken with Jared, the bags are up there at my request because you just want to make sure that everybody does pick up after their dogs, and you want to make it easy. So I told Mike, you know, we've, the city has put the bags out there to help encourage people to make sure that they take good care of the fields, and they have been. They're, you don't see, I mean, you do see coyote droppings out there from time to time, but we also, you know, the people that use the fields for running their dogs also don't want to step in anything either, so, you know, they're very careful about picking up, and they get after anybody who doesn't. The other day, I think, Greg, your wife sent me a photo of a gentleman, apparently he's a new resident in Orange, the other side of Santiago, that was defiant about not picking up after his dogs. And I shared the, the photo, first guy I shared the photo with, he said, "Oh yeah, that guy just moved in around the corner. I'll talk to him. I don't want him doing that." Anyway, the, the fields are very clean, you don't see dog messes. You see almost as many dirty, you know, dirty diapers floating around there as you do dog droppings. So people pick up. So anyway, I met with, I met with Mike Christiansen, explained to him generally what was going on, and asked him if he could put trash cans by the gates so that, you know, it'd make it even more convenient for people to pick up. And so he, he installed trash cans out there at the, at the expense of the school district for people to put their droppings, and it's worked great. So I know Jill Kuli has a real issue with this, but Mike Christiansen didn't seem to have an issue with it, so.
If I can comment, this is a school. This is, this is not, this is not a park. And as, and as a councilman, we need, you should be telling people dogs aren't allowed. I'm not saying people pick up or don't pick up. I don't have any issue when it comes to that. The issue is dogs aren't allowed. There, that is a place where kids play PE, that is where they run, that's where they train, that's where they sit on the ground, do jumping jacks. That's a school, it's not a park. It's not a meeting place for adults, it's not a meeting place for young kids. It is a school yard, and we have to respect someone else's property, just like I, you know, we don't want people coming onto our yard to play. So I don't, Mr. Christiansen is not the board, he is a superintendent, but that sign outside says it's illegal to bring dogs. And there's a concern from, there is a concern, there's concerns from parents, there's a concerns from the foundation, you don't want anyone bit. If somebody gets bit while the foundation has the Finians playing, where, you know, where, where's the liability at that point going to be? And that's what they're afraid of. So if people pick up, that's great, but it's not a meeting place. There's, you know, you got to go to the dog park, maybe by Yorba, there's a new dog park in Anaheim Hills, but it's not a dog park.
Well, I mean, like you said, you're the messenger, so appreciate that. Any other comments? Friends of the Library, tomorrow night, on Thursday night, excuse me, is a dinner fundraiser at Yanqing, which is over on South Glissel, and near the largest ficus tree in the world, I think it is. So that's going on, so if you don't have your tickets, and I'm going, and please do show up. It's a nice event, raises a lot of money for the library next door. Any comments from council?
This time, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject matter of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments. And first off, tonight, we have Wayne Sylzell, talking about National Night Out.
Lieutenant Gunzel, would you come up here and join me for a minute? We all, and some of you, and most of you hopefully, enjoyed the National Night Out here, where our fire department and our police department, sheriff's department, and other residents, including our retail tenants, all contributed to the evening, and it was delightful. Lieutenant Gunzel, we-
Wayne, can you talk into the microphone?
Lieutenant Gunzel, we, that was for them, I'll give this to you.
Oh, they can't, they can't hear us.
Lieutenant Gunzel, we enjoyed so much your tenure here. You have brought to us a degree of safety in our city, and we're, and I noticed that with all the news about other cities having trouble with their police departments and distrust and all of that, we put up this poster at National Night Out at our booth, and it reads at the top, Villa Park says "Thank you," sheriff's deputies. And that's all it said, and we, and as people came by, we, they saw it and said, "Oh." I said, "Well, if you like it, why don't you write your name or something on there?" And so we collected these, and I thought, they aren't all of them, but because some of the people didn't want to write their names, they were too busy eating a hot dog or something, but the message was clear. And I wanted you to know that many of them are teenage children and, and under from our schools that do appreciate the security officer at the school. He's been very cooperative with their needs as well as disciplines, and your people have done so much here, as evidenced by the crime statistics that have been reported about Villa Park's decline in crime, and I just want you to know how much we appreciate it. And would you, would you pass that on to, to the deputies? Mary and I have, have enjoyed Neighborhood Watch, and we believe that our residents have become more alert because of your people's instructions to us, like locking windows and doors and cars with shotguns in them. We'll keep pushing it out there, even though you won't be here to help us.
Yeah, you guys continue to do a good job, with or without me.
Well, we'll do our best.
I appreciate it.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mary Sylzell, Neighborhood Watch.
I'm Mary Sylzell, co-coordinator of Neighborhood Watch, and I want to add that National Night Out not only brought several new participants to our e-network, but it prompted two attendees from other cities to decide to initiate Neighborhood Watch in their areas. We were able to explain how simple, confidential, and non-demanding our e-network is, and that enabled them to realize it can be done anywhere. A special thanks goes out to Anitu Patinaik of OCSD for overseeing the event. Anitu is also assisting Neighborhood Watch participants here in Villa Park in implementing meetings within their neighborhood to involve all homes in specific areas. I want to thank again the participants in our network and also the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee members who promptly and diligently advise us of information and alerts that need to be communicated to our residents in order to assist law enforcement in keeping our city safe. Their willingness to funnel public information to us relieves city staff of additional demands on their time and interruption of their duties. It isn't by accident that Villa Park's crime rate is down 6% in the face of release of prisoners from California jails, while other cities have seen increases of up to 45 to 50% over that same span of time. It's the coordinated communication and cooperation between our law enforcement professionals and volunteers and the residents who look out for each other that makes Villa Park a model city for safety and security. Neighborhood Watch is the vehicle for our city's friendly interest in each other's welfare. It's simply neighbors taking care of neighbors. We continue to ask that residents report to the non-emergency number anything suspicious or unusual in their neighborhoods, to check the sheriff's blotter for current activity, and to advise of any information they can provide, to use the resources of vacation check and do not solicit list to enable our deputies to do their jobs, and to check the Megan's Law website to learn of convicted offenders in our area. It's a true pleasure and privilege to be able to enable Neighborhood Watch, and it's very rewarding to see the effectiveness of this network, and we thank you.
Thank you. Mary, could you, Mary, excuse me, you said there were two more Neighborhood Watch programs that kind of was initiated through National Night Out?
Two people from outside the city. Many of our attendees at National Night Out, because of the wonderful job the schools did of publicizing it, were people from surrounding communities.
Great.
And two of them came up and were very interested in our Neighborhood Watch program and left saying that they were going to start one in their neighborhood outside the city.
And could you repeat the non-emergency number for everyone?
Yes, it's 714-647-7000. We send that out with every Neighborhood Watch notice and also the blotter address and the Megan's Law website.
Thank you.
Would you bring up the do not solicit list issue?
We do inform the, the Neighborhood Watch people to let their neighbors know about the do not solicit list in an effort to overcome what is a growing problem of someone coming to the door, seeming to canvass, and then finding when the home is empty, cellphoning to someone nearby, "This is an empty house, come on in during the daytime." So we do really emphasize that it's not that we're trying to be an unfriendly city and keep out voluntary, volunteer groups that are soliciting, but because we're trying to get them to come here to City Hall and register and follow that procedure.
Okay, thank you. Donna Buxton, school traffic?
Good evening, Mayor Mills, city council members, and city staff. I'm Donna Buxton, I'm a resident of Dodson Way. Thank you for the opportunity for me to address you this evening. Well, as Councilwoman Fasenelli reported, tomorrow kicks off another school year. And in the event, you don't remember, we've had a lot of problems with dangerous driving conditions along Serrano Avenue, and permit-only restrictions were voted on for Dodson Way and Feather Hill. I want to remind you that our municipal code states that parking relative to educational institutions is considered not harmonious to residential living in our municipal code. Additionally, with the permit-only parking restrictions, we have two items that I am hoping you will direct our sheriffs to enforce our ordinances, not only from a technical perspective, but also in the spirit of those ordinances, that we have been allowed to try to protect the peace that we want to enjoy on our own residential streets and keep the, the school traffic off our streets. I want the community to understand that these residents have asked for help for a very long time to address the dangerous traffic conditions around the schools. To address that issue, these residents were offered permit-only parking, and we took it so that we could alleviate some of the chaos that was spreading from Serrano onto our residential streets. We understand that the schools are valuable assets to our communities, but we also, as residents, deserve some peace in our own homes. I don't want to go through the litany of issues that, that we have faced, but it has truly been a nuisance and a safety issue. And as the parents of OUSD face another year of parking challenges, I just want to urge them to address those problems with those who are responsible for that, and that's OUSD, not you, and not us. It's up to OUSD to address those problems. On the issue of safety, I also want to thank you for sanctioning the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee led by Vince Rossini. I, I think we're very lucky as a city to have such a volunteer group of seasoned law enforcement professionals looking after this city. In concert with our sheriff's department and our reinvigorated Neighborhood Watch program, it's no wonder that Villa Park is one of only two cities in Orange County experiencing a decrease in crime. I'm very grateful that Vince is willing to dedicate his valuable time and experience as well as those of his committee members and those on Neighborhood Watch, and I trust that you will continue to support them in their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Marlo Neighbor, housing element?
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. I wanted to just say a few words regarding the housing element. I wanted to ask that, I know you can't answer any of my questions, so this is probably more directed toward Jared. I wanted to ask that maybe you increase the noticing requirements for the rezoning if it is to be this area here where we are and also next door, if you could increase the noticing requirement for that so that our home, which is directly adjacent to the home directly adjacent here, would also get a notice for any type of rezoning? I'd appreciate that. I know several of my other neighbors would also appreciate that, so that we can just kind of know what's going on and be informed along the way. And then also, I wanted to find out when the vote was, so I'm hoping at some point, Jared, you have my email, maybe you can get back to me. I wanted to know when you would be voting on that. Hopefully, I didn't miss that somewhere.
To be sure.
Okay, perfect. Okay, great. And then I read a little bit about the, the 19 units, but I must have missed it, and I wasn't sure if it was specific as to where exactly we were saying the 19 units would go, but I'm assuming over here. And then I wanted to know, I, I appreciated the other program that discussed having secondary units and using those. I'm very familiar with Rena numbers, I worked for developers, so I completely understand we're forced to do it, I get it. I'm not opposed to that, you know, per se, I am, I am opposed to it. However, I know we have to do it, I know you probably don't want to, and I know we have to. So, having said that, though, I appreciate that other program about the secondary units, and I guess my question is, is there a way to look at all the properties here and count the properties that could allow a secondary unit in our Rena numbers so that we don't have to rezone over here? That's my question. And then I did have a couple more, hold on one second. I also wanted to know about the nursery. So I wanted to know if, since the nursery was brought up in your housing element, I have worked on several nurseries, and I have turned them into homes before, so I know that is a possibility, but, you know, I also feel for those neighbors that are surrounding that nursery, so I would ask that if you did look at the nursery property, don't know if you are, that you also increase the noticing for those neighbors so that they're just aware of what's happening and they can comment, and you can get very great comments from, from neighbors who are familiar with these issues, such as myself, who's been dealing with it with my clients. But I do ask that you look at that and just inform us along the way so we know what's happening. Okay, thank you.
Jared, what is the notice period?
We haven't triggered noticing requirements just yet. I'd have to go-
I'd have to go back and take a look at the regulations board, 300 or 1,000 feet generally?
Generally 300 feet for all public hearings, and the adoption of the housing element is a public hearing. I will say, though, under the Brown Act, somebody can sign up to be notified specifically on certain agenda items, so we will add her list, and you will specifically get your own notice.
And her neighbors as well?
Well, you know, whatever the council directs as far as notice.
I think it's also not only the distance, but the time period, correct? And it's usually what, 90 days or?
10 days' notice.
10 days?
From the hearing. It's also put in the newspaper.
Okay.
As to one of the points, as far as Rena numbers and second units, fortunately, unfortunately, and I'm sort of with you as to the philosophical point, the HCD hasn't given much credit for those, given cities much credit for those anymore. They used to, a couple cycles back, but they really don't anymore. I mean, that was investigated as a potential option, yeah.
Okay. With that, is any other public comments?
I have one last comment.
Go ahead.
I'd like to address a rumor that's been going around about something that I was alleged to have said. Early this month, some residents informed me that a malicious rumor is circulating that I support privatizing the city's maintenance functions and laying off Mike and Rich. That's crazy talk. Our maintenance staff is critical to the operation of our city, and they are family to the Villa Park community. Further, personally, Mike and I go back to when our kids were in first grade. Although this is not the first time this silly rumor has been circulated, my immediate concern was the potential impact on Mike and Rich, knowing how upsetting it would be to hear this rumor making the rounds yet again. I immediately tracked down Mike and Rich and reiterated to them that, from my perspective, their jobs are secure, that this is just insensitive election-year mischief, and that I would not propose laying them off. In fact, I would oppose any initiatives to do so. Further, I cannot imagine that any other councilman would support such an initiative. During the 2014 Candidates Forum, each of us candidates was asked how we would address the city's large and growing unfunded pension liability. Make no mistake, the pension, unfunded pension liability is a clear threat to our city's financial viability and has only grown since the Candidates Forum two years ago, and I think that's something that Councilman Barnett has given us a lot of warning about. My response was that I would investigate further privatizing the city's functions, but only as employees retire or otherwise voluntarily separate from employment with the city. Mike and Rich are two of the most liked and well-known members of the Villa Park family. My adult son, or my son Harry and Mike's daughter Kelly were classmates at Villa Park Elementary many years ago, so I've known Mike for a long time. The very thought that I would even consider supporting terminating Mike's or Rich's employment with the city is nothing short of preposterous. I understand that it's election season and that being in elected office makes me fair game for a lot of nonsense, and I accept that. But what I don't accept is dragging innocent employees into political games. It's important for rumor mongers to consider if there are unintended victims being impacted before making politically motivated claims. Again, you know, anybody that promotes this rumor any further is promoting a lot of silliness. I don't, I wouldn't support that, and I think we all support Mike and Rich. Thank you.
Any other questions, any other public comments?
One item, Mr. Mayor, reading the record, is the email that we received this afternoon from Mr. Steven Von Trobsky.
Yes.
Regarding Orange County Fire Authority pension liabilities.
We have three letters, one from the January 29th, the 25th, and as of today as well. Put that file, correct? Thank you. At this time, members of, oh, wrong one, sorry. Consent calendar. Now we will consider the consent calendar. All these items are considered routine and usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda, which is also in the back. If you just come in, there's agendas in the back. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items you would like to remove from the consent calendar? Council?
Yes, I would like 2, 5, and 7.
2, 5, and 7. Any other council members? Any other members of the public or staff? Seeing none, can we remove items 2, 5, and 7 and have a motion to?
I'll move the reminder.
Move the rest. We have a motion and a second?
Motion and second to approve the balance. Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Mayor Mills?
Yes.
Carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. We will now take up the other items that were pulled for discussion. Councilwoman Fasenelli, number 2.
Okay, let's see, on item number 2, let's see, we, this is, I just want to bring up the doggy walk bags that is on the check register, and what we have here is we have an item that was payable, it's $379 for doggy walk bags. I had the staff give me an itemization of how many bags that we've bought, and Michelle, you could probably help me, because I think we purchased like 16,000 bags not just too long ago, and now there's an additional charge of $379, but I want to make sure that it is for bags and not for a display or something like that.
Hold on a minute, let me pull that.
No, with doggy walk bags, we purchase just bags from them.
Okay, so that's a lot of bags. So maybe the description is incorrect, because 16,000 bags that we, three months ago, we purchased, and now we're purchasing another 32 rolls for $379. I'm just...
16,000 sounds pretty accurate. They come in about 500 per roll. I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Yeah, I do.
Did we run through them that much?
We do. Unfortunately, folks don't just take one at a time, they might take three, four, five, even a whole roll. And by the school, kids walking home will get them up and put them in their pocket and walk on by.
These people are taking care of the school field.
Well...
Okay.
We spend about $1,000 a year on doggy walk bags?
Well, we, yeah, we spent a little bit more, we spent quite a bit, so I just want to just bring it to, this is a lot of money for the doggy walk bags. I mean, it is what it is, maybe we can get, maybe we can get a grant from the foundation or something on doggy walk day for it to come through, you know?
This is, isn't this part of our stormwater permit compliance program too?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's to try to keep the, control the bacterial indicator levels in our stormwater runoff.
Down at the beach, that's right, down at the beach, exactly.
Okay, all right.
Downstream neighbors.
The next item I want to talk, we've got, let's see, vendor number 2820, which is Serrano Water District. Currently, there is not any restrictions on how much water we can use. We're not...
Point of order, can we make a motion on item number 2?
Are you still on the?
I'm still on, I'm still on.
Still on 2, okay, I thought, all right.
If everyone recalls, Serrano Water raised our rates approximately 30%, and I attend all the water district meetings, which I invite everybody to come, it is on a Tuesday, it is at 8:30 in the morning. But they did raise our rates 30%, we complied, we reduced our water 36%, the city reduced their water 36%, and, you know, it's a lot of money for Serrano, and I think that as councilpeople, we have to look out for our residents and look out for the city and not be an advocate at Serrano Water to have them spend money. An item came on their agenda that, it was about an association, it was the California Special Districts Association, it was a bill, and the Serrano Water Board did not want to renew their membership. It was approximately a $6,800 bill because they didn't utilize the services. That was great, because they were looking at gas bills, they were looking at cleaning bills, they were looking at everything, because they had raised our rates so much that they're trying to reduce their expenses. So they did not renew their membership, and it was a good thing. Now, the next meeting that came up a couple months later, what happens is we have a council person who comes in and wants them to be part of the membership. At that same time, I was there advocating that our bills be lowered, because we, they had quite a bit of money. And I'm bringing this up because what we have here is we have a 30% increase, and we have a councilperson who's come in to say, "We would like you to increase," they wanted them to spend money, after they decided that they were going to decrease their expenses. I'm bringing this to the attention, I brought it to the attention of the councilperson, I've also brought it to the attention of Serrano, I was there advocating for them to not spend the money on an association that they clearly said they didn't utilize, that they didn't renew, and also brought it to their attention that they have not reduced our rates once they raised our rates, and now there is not any water restriction. So I was an advocate for the city at that time. One of the board members has brought it up, that possibly they have to look at in the future, about our rates, giving us some sort of a rate reduction. They did bring it up at the last board meeting, but I think as councilpeople, we need to be very aware of what's occurred here, because right now, our rates are going up, that includes the city, that includes us.
Okay.
And I welcome everybody.
So which item is that?
This is item, it's vendor number 2820, Serrano Water District, it's the water bills.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Thank you. Anything else on number 2?
Nope, I move it.
Second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Mayor Mills already. Motion is to approve item number 2, the warrants and dispersments. Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Item number 5, and this is, I'm just following up.
Point of order, we need to vote on this one individually.
Yeah, roll call vote, sorry.
We'll go right to 5 after that.
Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Mayor Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Barnett?
Yes.
Carries 5-0.
Item 5, Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yeah, I'm just reading it, I'm just doing some follow-up. There was an item that was supposed to be brought back and agendized, and Councilman Barnett, I kept, let's see, page 9 of 19 on the minutes, that you wanted to bring back, let's see, he was in sport of LEAC and the focus of safety, and you were going to agendize the discussion, he would like to agendize the discussion of limiting the LEAC committee to criminal activity and out of neighborhood affairs. So I'm just following up on that item from the last meeting.
You're addressing it to me? Yeah, I'm aware of that, and I'm aware that didn't come back up, and...
Someone brought, a resident brought it to my attention, so I won't just read it.
Yeah, I mean, frankly, I stand by what I said, I think it makes sense. However, I guess I'm torn a little bit on the concept of impairing their discretion since they're just advisory. I figure that probably is going to stir a big controversy here, and frankly, I wasn't sure that it was worth the battle, but I still think it makes sense, and if any other council members are interested and want that up, I'm glad to stand by it and move forward that. I do think that the LEAC committee, I was, I was around when it was set up and involved to some extent, and it really was for crime, it wasn't for dealing with all these issues and suing the school district and traffic and blah, 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 blah. There may be some good that's come out of some of that, so I am a little torn on it. People donate their time and hate to stifle it, but I do feel that they, that it's, I do feel that it's gone overboard a bit, and if there's any other council members that are interested in reviewing that, you know, I would be glad to address it as well, but unless I hear that, I'm just not going to pursue that issue on my own at this point.
Okay, any other comments, questions to the council?
The other one I have is...
Just vote on this one?
No, I'm not done yet. I have another item on.
Another item, okay.
Yeah, on page 14, it was, let's see, we had requested information from OCTA regarding the streets, because we wanted to see what, how the other streets were, the percentage of the street that was good in comparison to ours. And I had found an OCTA report that did list that to us, and it's my understanding that that report doesn't exist right now anymore and is not coming back to us, correct?
Michelle and I are still working on the forecast for seven, 10 years out, so we can actually take a look at our hard numbers and where we're going to be in the future. With regards to the OCTA reports, now they are reporting based on excellent, fair, good levels instead of the actual PCI percentage. So we're tracking down each individual city and their PCI percentage, we'll bring it back likely in September.
So when, the 82%, so they don't use the number system of the 82%?
Correct.
If that's the case, why did we get a report that had numbers? Is it just from our...
Numbers are submitted to OCTA, but OCTA doesn't compile the numbers, they compile the definition categories. So definition of excellent, very good, fair, good, so we have to go to each individual city and obtain the numbers from them.
Okay, thank you. I move it.
Second?
These are minutes, so a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Councilwoman Fasenelli, item number 7?
Item 7, this is a grand jury report that came in regarding drones, know before you fly. And certainly, at this point, the city has not had any, has not had any issues with drones, you know, flying and, you know, over your house, at least that we are aware of, and looking in your neighborhood or what have you. But I just want to bring it to the council's attention and to the residents' attention, just because we haven't had an issue. This would be something that, if it did come up, I could pretty much 99.9 guarantee that this council would have a drone policy, that we don't want a drone flying over our backyard watching everything that we do. And I kind of equate it to the fact that when we were reviewing the town center policies, there were certain, there were certain stops that we knew that we did not want in the town center. A smoke shop was one of them, and we knew that, because we never wanted to approve that. So in this case, even though there isn't anything we have to do, the grand jury is asking us for a policy, and I'd just like a little discussion or for somebody to think about it, rather than kicking it down the line, we know we're never going to want the drone, you know, flying over our backyard. So I don't know why we're not answering it now, maybe we just don't want to, we don't have the time.
I have a question for Lieutenant Gunsel on that. Is there other laws that could preclude that? I mean, not, we don't have a drone policy, I mean, we have enough laws as it is, I mean, we usually find a way to enforce what we need to enforce.
All different counsel, but there is, there is laws that are in the books, they're not in the books, they're being voted in the various committees right now. Back to the conversation with county council today, she had a webinar before I princessed.
Yeah, so there's, there's state law, there's basically, it's called the anti-paparazzi law, you can't fly over someone's house and take pictures via a drone. There's federal law that was adopted about two months ago with various regulations on different categories of drones. You have commercials drones, you have recreational drones, and then apparently, the model airplane industry is classified as under the drone regulations, and they're an incredibly powerful lobby, who knew? And so they've sort of been exempted with minor registration requirements. The chief police is correct, there's approximately 20 laws pending in the state legislature right now to deal with these various issues. And our take sort of is, you know, the law is moving so fast, why do we want to jump in and adopt something when it's probably going to be preempted within six months? That's the general vibe of our, okay, well, let's see how it plays out. So, well-stated as to potential concerns, but I think...
But we also have current laws that are applicable anyway.
That we can deal with stuff as well, so we're not left weaponless, so to speak, if something were to occur.
The main thing is to call the non-emergency call line if you have a problem, right?
Right. The current law being the state law and the federal law, not the, not the, no, Villa Park does not have a current drone ordinance.
I think the people that are behind this law just want more support, I understand that, but I don't think we need to have another, another rule. We've got plenty of them. Any other comments from council? Deanna, you got any?
No.
Can I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
A voice vote to approve the... Letter to the grand jury, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you. New business, we have item number 8. Jared, could you give a report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is consideration of award contract for sewer line cleaning. City has approximately 30 sewer line miles underneath our streets, and we routinely clean one half of the city each year, the north half and the south half. Our current providers' contract recently expired, so we issued a request for proposals, and bids were open on August 15th. The lowest bidder is Municipal Underground Services with base bid of $31,360. They have worked with the city in the past, their contract actually expired the last time we went out for an RFP, and they were deemed a responsible bidder. We have approximately $33,000 budgeted in the city's budget this year, and we can absorb the costs there. Our recommendation is that the city council authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Municipal Underground Services in the amount of $31,360 for sewer line cleaning and emergency services, and authorize the city manager to direct Municipal Underground Services to perform emergency response service as needed.
Jared, I have a question. Why are the bids so... Why are the bids so...
Different.
Different.
Right. Yeah, five times.
Five times. Familiarity with the city, you know, it, when we issue the RFPs, they go on a number of bid boards. Municipal Underground was our past provider, Empire Pipe Cleaning is our current provider. So they understand the city and the working knowledge of us, which is why you see the, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar difference between the bids.
Okay.
Hundred and twenty-six thousand. Is this a three-year contract?
This is a three-year contract with optional one-year extensions.
So is it thirty-one thousand a year?
Mm-hmm.
So then shouldn't it be a ninety-three thousand dollar contract?
Times three, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But if it says three years, I mean, that all comes out in the math.
We'll budget it every year.
Alright.
Yeah, so it's really a ninety-three thousand dollar contract.
But it's all budgeted every year, okay.
But you're approving it now, so if you approve it now...
Yeah, that's a good point.
You're approving year two and three as well.
How about number four, since they have an option?
That number, that's great.
They have the option for number four.
They have an option to raise this?
Option for fourth year.
To renew.
To renew at that rate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They could always ask for, you know, price increase if something significant were to happen, or change in MPDS legislation.
Okay, is there any...
It's a great deal compared to others. You get three years for less than what...
And FYI, if something happens in the council, there is a termination clause in the proposal, it's not thirty days notice, so we're not bound for three years necessarily.
But both the low bidding firms have proven that they can do this effectively.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
I'm over approval.
Second.
Did you need public comment for that?
Oh yes, I'm sorry, public comment, is there any public comment on this motion?
Does he have any there?
I did not. Anyone for the public? Guess not. Seeing none?
A voice vote to approve the contract, and the motion is stated in the staff report, or a roll call, excuse me. Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Barnett?
Yep.
The motion carries, five zero.
Next we have item nine. Mr. City Manager, Jared, do we have a report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, let me open up item ninety-nine.
This is considered a fraud, waste, and abuse hotline.
Yes, thank you. Last month, the city council directed staff to research the implementation of such hotline. We conducted some preliminary research, found a couple vendor parties that, out there, third vendors to administer a hotline. Now, the goal and the objective of the hotline is to provide a procedure for contractors, volunteers, employees, elected officials, the general public, to report suspected cases of fraud to the city. Suspected cases of fraud could be theft, accounting, irregularities, misuse of city property or equipment, contractor fraud, et cetera. I've called some neighbor cities, see what they use. Irvine, I believe, and Placentia use a company called NavX Global. The county uses a company called Concept, Compliance Concepts on the East Coast. And City Orange actually has a voicemail answering machine in City Hall, which the numbers go to. The companies I talked to have minimums, one minimum was up to forty complaints a year, and that cost was twenty-five hundred. The minimum for the second company was a hundred complaints, and that cost is sixty-five hundred dollars. Any complaint over the minimums were approximately thirty-five dollars per call. It's tough to estimate how many calls we're going to receive here in Villa Park, since we haven't rolled out a service like this before. So how the hotline works is residents or a reporting party will either call the toll-free number, or go online via link through the city's website, and they're taken to another portal, which is hosted by the vendor's service. They input all the information, and even documents, or pictures, or photographs that they might have with regards to this, to the alleged complaint. And from there, an email notification is forwarded to the city's designated representative. So here's where the city council policy comes in. We can designate who sees the complaint, is it the city manager and the city attorney? Is it combination of us with the city council review committee? So the complaint would be notified via email. One fancy trick tool that they had is, if I were the subject of the complaint and I was on that notification list, they would automatically pull my name off the notification list and notify just the other three parties. From there, the committee would meet, or the designated group would meet, and determine whether or not they want to fully investigate the complaint, if it was substantial or not. So at this time, there's still a lot of work to be done. We're looking at approximately twenty-five hundred to six thousand dollars per year to operate such hotline, and then staff...
How much a year?
Twenty-five hundred to six thousand. And then we are looking at staff time needed to actually conduct investigations. Best practices out there, Institute for Local Government, some of the Fraud Examiners Association praise hotlines such as this in help finding fraud. It should be noted that there were no cases of fraud in Villa Park which triggered such a hotline. We're trying to get ahead of the curve on this, for parties to report to the city, but at this time, we'll leave it up to your discretion.
So basically, it's just a number that somebody calls into, and it's twenty-five hundred dollars at least for a few calls. Can't we just put a notice on our website that called Todd, or? Please don't do that.
I like that, that's good.
I like that better than twenty-five hundred bucks.
I do too, I do too.
Yeah, we can, I mean, I can look at pursuing other alternatives, a toll-free number, which goes to an answering machine. I can see where you would want a hotline, or a third-party vendor to field calls, that way it takes the personal relationships out of it. You know, if somebody has a complaint against me, the city manager, and calls here, City Hall, and, you know, it's Thursday afternoon, and I'm by myself, and I answer the phone, chances are, they're not going to report the complaint to me.
Well, but I'm thinking about, if there is a complaint to this hotline, then how do they take action?
The hotline?
The hotline, the reason for the hotline, though, let's make sure this go back a little bit, when I went to the fraud symposium, is that it's anonymous. There is actually no trace back, because that, the firm that takes that call, that gives us it, there's no trace back to that call. Even from the, when they go out to prosecute them, you don't get to them. That's where it came from. So we're talking true fraud here, we're not talking, you know, somebody took somebody's, you know, dog out of their front yard, we're, you know, we're talking big stuff.
Yeah, but I thought you were, you got to see your accusers, you know, who's signing the complaint here?
This is, this is about, this is an anonymous...
If they choose.
Are we talking?
Yeah, we're making comments, yes.
I have a thought, you know, I mean, the concept's interesting. It's such a tight-knit little group here, and a fairly educated, affluent community, that I'm just, I'd hope that we wouldn't have to do this to get response. It's an interesting concept. I question what's really coming out of it. Unfortunately, the only way to find out is to try it. I'm thinking if we really want to do that, maybe we have a number, they call, and, you know, let the, let it go to council members or something, let the council get, let the council members get a copy of the call, and let us listen to it directly, so you don't have to worry about it, you know, being tied up in city. In fact, better yet, I'd almost rather just put something on the website that says, if you're aware of any of this, please contact any of the following council members, these are their private lines, you know, and just have a policy on it, and let one of us get it, and we could discuss it with another one, and agendize it as appropriate, or do what we need to do. Then we don't have to have all that money and all that interaction.
Or is it, does it go to human resources? I don't know. I think that's probably the appropriate place that it goes first, and leave it at that. I mean, I don't see spending anywhere, say, four thousand dollars on this, I don't, I think, you know, and then you have to administer it from a staff point of view, you have to go on and on with other procedures, and I know that you have enough to do already. So I appreciate the bringing this up, I think it's something we do need to address, but I don't know if we need to spend this kind of money for it, actually.
Jared, how many employees do we have?
Seven full-time equivalent employees, and a number of contractors.
Okay.
I'm not sure we even have enough for fraud and abuse.
We do have a lot of checks and balances and internal controls in place.
We have a lot of internal controls in place now to counter that.
But I think if somebody's on the outside, or trying to do business with us, and they suspect something, they do need to have an outlet to go to. And so I think it goes to the Human Resources Committee first, somehow, and with a number. But I just can't see us spending this kind of money for that, for a hotline that may never get a call. I mean, we could spend twenty-five hundred dollars and find out, but I think that's kind of superfluous.
I think just refer, I think just put all accounts, you know, if you have any of this, you know, we've liked to address it, and just to keep it above the staff level or whatever, here's all the city council members, feel free to email or contact any of them directly. You know, they'll discuss it with you before they get back to us, whatever. I just, I just don't think it's going to be that much. If it turns out, you know, if it turns out it's a big deal, then, you know, maybe we need to change it. I'm just really skeptical there, and I'm kind of reticent to spend the money, too.
Todd, do you have any comments as council on this?
Some cities do have such hotlines, generally bigger cities, right? As to, you know, I don't know from a technological standpoint, if you wanted it to go to Human Resources, if you could set up a special Human Resources email, that just the HR committee members would have access to, or something of that nature, or a way to direct it to a certain...
And you can also have anonymous emails coming into it, I mean, you can do that, you don't, they don't have to...
I mean, you can set up a Gmail account.
Yeah, I mean, it's not much, so...
That is, well, I mean, if we had Gooseifer, whoever the big hackers are, they could figure out who it came from, but nobody sitting at this table could figure out, I assure you. So there are ways to do it, right? But I've usually seen it done in bigger cities. And my own personal experience in Villa Park has been, when there has been something potentially that raises to the level of a concern, I'm the one who eventually finds out about it, and has to take some proactive action. Now, there could be stuff happening that I don't know about assuredly, but I don't think it's been a problem. Now, this is maybe to prevent future problems primarily.
There is no problem, this is a preventative, and I think that these ideas are great, that everyone is talking about, and, because there isn't any right or wrong, but the reason it's proposed as it is, is because it was anonymous. Okay?
Yeah.
And coming to human, I'm thankful that we're battering around different kind of ideas, but somebody sending Human Resource an email is no different, quite frankly, than what we have right now. Because if somebody thinks there's fraud, they can email anybody, email you directly. So I don't think we need to set, if we're not going to do the fraud hotline, there's no reason to change anything. Because the whole reason for that is that it is anonymous, and it doesn't get traced back to them. And if we don't feel that there's, don't feel that there's a need, that's okay. But there's no reason to change a procedure to have it go to Human Resources, because what if the Human Resource person, what if they don't care for me? They don't want that email coming, you know, to me as a councilwoman.
It's going to be anonymous, though.
But it's, but it's not, they have, it's coming directly to us, so there's no reason to change anything. I mean, they would go to you, or they would go to Barnett, or they'd call the city manager, or quite frankly, they'd call the DA. You know, this was something that came up from the county, in relationship certainly to what's occurred with Placentia, which Placentia now does have a fraud hotline, costing more than forty-five hundred dollars. And some of the other cities have them. And so it's good to bring up what the other, regardless of our size, what comes up, and this isn't just about employees, this is about copper, you know, stuff being taken off Mike's truck, I'm just, we, there are other ways that there's fraud that occurs in the city. But, you know, certainly respect the battering, but I don't think we need to change anything.
But I appreciate you going to this meeting and suggesting this, I mean, it did bring up a good topic, but if it winds up in Todd's hands anyway, I think we're covered, for now, unless, and the public does watch, I mean, all this stuff is online, all the checks and all the transfers are all there. And, you know, our enterprise here is not that large compared to the vast majority of cities in the county, so...
That's it? There's nothing to change?
Nothing to change. Any public comment?
I was going to say something.
Yes, I was going to ask you next, because you've...
Because my card's right there.
You're blue slip right here.
That's right, I can't hide from you. Well, I'm glad to see that there's kind of a negative feeling about whether we really need this, and you've covered a lot of my thoughts on it when I saw it on the agenda, but I'll just kind of cover it real quick. That we haven't really seen any evidence of problems in our city, we're the smallest city in Orange County, we're not real complex. You know, are we seeing a pattern of missing or misuse city resources? We already have checks and balances in the financial arena and back and forth. We have a small enough staff that timekeeping and payroll fraud would be easily caught. And then there's also the additional costs, if we have to get our legal staff involved, if something comes up, then we have a lot more costs, and it's probably a lot more than that yearly retainer for the service. The thing that hasn't come up is that an anonymous hotline can really be a vehicle for fraud and abuse, and a means by which personal vendettas, or unscrupulous business people might want to try to discredit people they're competing against. And I don't, I don't really see a need for something that's anonymous, because it could open the gates for people who are really out to discredit others and cause problems. It's when your name is on it, and you're willing to put yourself forward, that, you know, it legitimizes the issue. So, you know, we're not a real complex city, and I'm glad to see that a lot of the responses, you know, do we really need this? So, and that's, that's my feeling on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, back to council, any other comments? Okay, would we like to just file this? Okay. With that, I'm going to move to item number ten, and this is a requested matter considering a two-story addition to the city hall. This is in regards to the housing element, a cure for that. You have a report, Jared?
This matter was agendized by...
Councilwoman Fasenelli.
This wasn't necessarily to the housing element, this is something I have to bring to council, because I can't speak to all five of you at the same time, trying to put...
That's true.
Yeah, I mean, trying to have a discussion with these guys is, you know, is hard. Over the years, every group we have complains there isn't any meetings, we don't have enough meeting space, we don't have enough meeting, the council chambers are too small, we want, we need more space to have a women's league meeting, or the Rotary meeting, our council meetings. And we've talked about a variety of items before, but there isn't any land to buy. And I think that the only other option that we have, if, if we were ever going to make any sort of meeting space here, it would be to add a second story to this. I'm not advocating that we do put a second story, I think what I'm trying to do is provide an answer to all of our community groups, who say we need a place, we need a community center, we need a senior center, we need a meeting space, we don't have enough office space in City Hall, because we're limited. We have the library that comes in here multiple times a week, they're, they have a great activities calendar, and they utilize this room more than anybody. We have a certain community group, such as AA, that come in here daily, every single day, two and three times a day that uses it. We have outside vendors that come in weekly, that rent this place, and the needs there. And right now, we're kind of tripping over each other. So I'm bringing this to you to see if that is something that we want to look at, do we want to add a second story, so that we have room to have our community meetings, to add to our activities for the library, which uses it a lot, to allow our women's league to be able to meet here and have more of a meeting space. And so I bring this up for discussion. It's come up before, the building next door to us was for sale at some particular point last year. It was something that I brought up, that we maybe could have looked at pursuing it, that, you know, that option has gone, it's gone now, we didn't buy it, it got sold. So what other options would we have to be able to expand our community space? And so this is for discussion.
Any other comments from council?
I think we'd have to have an analysis of the cost and what we generate from it, but my gut feeling is it'd be very expensive, and I don't think we could justify it, we got enough other problems, such as the streets.
Well, you're looking to, I'm not looking to generate income, I'm looking to offer the community a place to go. Well, you're looking to gen, I'm not looking to generate income. I'm looking to offer the community a place to go.
I agree with you, Diana. I think there is a need for more meeting space. And certainly you want to promote groups, you know, our citizen groups, you know, the Rotary and so forth, meeting, having places to meet and have more community activity here in the center. Maybe we can think out of the box a little bit. Right now, we have an area behind our city hall, which is fairly underutilized in terms of, you know, kind of use. Right now, we have mostly just parking and our maintenance activities and storage in the back. You know, maybe, again, thinking out of the box, and this is, you know, something that would have to be fleshed out, maybe we could work something out with Toronto Water District. They have a very large area behind their facility that's kind of hidden back behind. Maybe we could work out a conjunctive use thing with Toronto Water District so we can move some of our storage and maintenance over there. You know, I agree with, with Rick. We've got some significant financial issues, I think, going forward with, you know, we've got, you know, pension liabilities, you've got streets that need work. We anticipate we're gonna have some significant cost to deal with some storm drain issues and so forth. But, you know, maybe if we could work with these community groups and maybe, you know, some of the residents, if they want to, you know, make, you know, set up a foundation and donate, maybe make space available for construction with private funds in the back area. Certainly, land costs in this area are significant and that would be a significant contribution by the city. But, you know, let's think of other ways to do this and it wouldn't involve disruption of our existing city council or city chambers and council building. So...
It's okay, Jared.
And just something to think about in the future. It's, there's a lot to think about.
Jared, sorry, Bob. What, how many people usually come to these meetings? I mean, on average. I mean, I know what Rotary does and I know what BNI does and the other things, but are people using the, the back room? I mean, is it like 10 people, 25?
If the group holds, you know, 10 or under, will offer the back room. Any more than that, it's a little crammed. The Women's League Executive Board, for example, uses the back room. The Rotary Executive Board, the back room. You know, AA probably has 30, 40 users every day. OCHJF, Orange County Junior All-American Football, is 40 to 50, I would imagine. Same with the HOHO, the Hallmark Ornament Collectors Club, Hummel Club. And we have some fairly significant, long-time users of this room.
And the library, too.
And yes.
Library.
I was curious if we could use the AV room in the back here somehow, make it larger for that executive room. We've already got sliding glass doors there now.
Trying to process that through my head, you know, we would, I wouldn't want them in the AV room.
No.
Having access to all the equipment. We would, I would expand the rear city hall, maybe, you know, add an addition back there, cheaper than going up.
I mean, do we need to have that backside AV room?
Yeah, unfortunately, we do. The AV room runs camera and Villa Park Cable Access Television and it doubles as storage and records for us.
Well, that's just something, getting out of the box, you know, we gotta have to kind of use what we already have as far as...
Sure, yeah.
Land, I know that. Just Todd.
Just as some historical perspective, Jared and I were just talking, trying to remember. Whenever we redid the front, that was about five or six years ago, I think Laurie Sassoon, who was city manager at the time, we looked at the potential of doing a second story. And we could not just construct on top of this building. It was not structurally sound enough. Actually, the brick out in front is like a separate standalone structure because we didn't want it leaning against this part of the building because it would fall down. There would have to be substantial, you know, well, exactly, permanently. There would have, it would be, if there is a second story, it's a good idea. There would be a lot of construction costs related there, too.
Well, then why don't we open it up to the public now and, and we can bring this up for a while. I mean, I think it's a great idea. I mean, we have, we have to get some other space.
We need some ideas.
Yeah. And so I think we agreed at two, two meetings ago that any time we came up with something like this, we should ask the public. What, this is something we're thinking about. Not that we're going to do it, but let's open it up and see if we get some ideas back.
Could I, could I make a comment before you open the public? Do, does demand exceed, you know, the capacity we have here now?
Not daily.
If the, the demand doesn't exceed capacity, then why would we add capacity at, at some cost, you know?
We, we, if you had it, you know, if you have it, it'll get used. I mean, it would be nice to have. My concern is, I think it's gonna be extremely costly and I just don't think we can justify it.
Cost is gonna be costly. And you're, you're never gonna recover it. And we have, we have other needs. You know, we, we just found last meeting, we need a million dollars a year for roads, just to maintain them as they are. So we need to watch every dollar.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay. It's my concern.
And I would also comment that when we put these things on the agenda, we should have some explanation about what you're talking about. Because there's rampant rumors throughout the community that it's gonna be low-income housing put on top of this building. Because there's nothing on the agenda that says what it is. When, when council people put things on the agenda, they should put on there specifically what they want, like a staff report, and come up with a recommendation, not just a general thing that allows rumors to run rampant in the community.
That's interesting. No, no one even called me.
No one what?
That's a great rumor. I haven't heard, I never heard your rumor and I didn't hear your rumor. I guess I've been out of town.
I, I heard, yeah, I heard the rumor about the low-income housing. It's like, where'd that come from?
Because, because there's nothing on it. It just says a second story and it leads it to people's imagination of what they're going to do.
I hope you corrected.
Of course I corrected it. Right away, I corrected it.
We, we were proposing to rezone just the office section over here, is that right? None of this. Just, it was just, just the office.
It gets convoluted pretty easily.
Yeah, you know, it, it's already zoned for mixed-use, multifamily. What we need to amend right now are the development standards.
But it only, it only dealt with this segment over here, right?
As well as city hall.
City hall.
These two parcels.
And city hall and that.
These two properties.
But see, people could put the two things together. We just changed the housing element that allows it. Isn't that true?
So basically, just a little clarification would go a long way here. Okay.
It, it, okay.
Open the public. Can any public comment?
He asked a good question. I might make sure it's corrected properly. We rezoned.
So, yes, so city hall.
We're gonna go for the housing element bill. That was done two years ago. So I'm gonna make sure that the public's aware of that. We didn't do that now. Two years ago it was rezoned.
And now we have the development standards.
Yes.
For multifamily mixed-use. What we failed to do when we rezoned it was define the development standards. And what HCD wants to use or wants to see is that if low-income housing is to be built, it's to be built at 20 units per acre, at a density of 20 units per acre. And that's what we didn't insert into our code at the time.
And my understanding is it wasn't low-income housing. It was high-density housing.
High-density, yeah.
So which could be very expensive, but...
So we haven't gone down that exercise yet. We've identified what our plan is and we've sent it up to HCD for review. You know, are, are they gonna give us the green light or not? If they do, then we'll come back and actually go through the process to amend our code to allow for these developments.
And that just allows for it. Doesn't give anybody the green light for building anything.
There's no mandate at that point. Just Todd.
Just to bring that to Councilman Colacott's point, yeah. You set density levels and you get credit from the state from those density levels. We do not have an inclusionary ordinance, which requires a certain percentage to be affordable. So it would be market rate units at that density. I mean, affordable housing in your Belinda, you know, apartment, condos cost 680,000. I mean, so, for a bit of perspective. And as to the zoning issue, often cities will zone their own property to meet their housing element requirements because then the city still controls ultimately what gets built. There's no requirement that anything be built in the housing element. You just have to make it potentially available. So the mere fact that it's, city hall is zoned as a 20 DU acre site doesn't mean it ever has to be built as.
And that was exactly the, the thinking that went into this was that, okay, we want to have control so that we, you know, the community has input as to what ultimately it is going to, would ever be done if anything was done.
Well, that's the reason we had John, the consultant, meaning, and also be able to word it properly, too, for the state housing. Can I take it to public comment now?
Yes.
Could I call Mike Wesner, please? Thank you, sir.
Mayor Mills and council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm Mike Wesner, 17841 Bishop Circle, one of your closest neighbors in the back. I wanted to express my opposition to a second story to this city council building. Inasmuch as we don't want drones looking over our yard, I don't want city council looking over my yard either. Not to mention my jacuzzi habits, okay?
No windows.
I changed my vote. I want...
A number of us on Bishop Circle do keep tabs on city council. I mean, we've been here through cell towers that would be put in the back that would radiate our family to bakeries turned into nightclubs, to service stations that we use on a regular basis turned into a desperately needed coffee shop. Now, we're talking about a second story onto a building that, what do we put in, $600,000 to this, front of this building? And we're going to demolish it for a second story for, I know the cost. I mean, I do some construction myself. I know the, to put a second story on a building like this would be exorbitantly expensive. But I know government, they do things that don't necessarily make financial sense, but they make political sense. But I just want to let you know that from our standpoint, we have a number of families that live behind you here and we do oppose such a project because it imposes a property value issue with us. And what are the unintended consequences to a second story here? Does that mean you can put a second story over there, a third story over here? Suddenly, we have high rises going up to the south of our property. It's, it's an open, you know, it's an open door. I don't know. That's not my expertise. But I just wanted to let you know, we're, we're here and we're here to, to express that. So thank you.
Thank you. We're, we're also here to try to keep the folks in Sacramento happy with us so they don't tell us what we have to do.
Yes.
That's even more concerning.
I understand that. You, you have a lot of people to answer to, not just the constituents here, but the state, but...
Oh, we hear you loud and clear.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. David Wallace, also on Bishop. Welcome back.
I just got back last night. Thank you. How did you know I was gone?
I didn't know you were here, but you've been here before.
We haven't seen you in a while.
We were in Europe for a while, so with the kids. I have a suggestion. Instead of building an addition in the back or one up the top, it's very simply, I was heavily involved with the Boy Scouts for years and they have historically used one of the schoolroom sites that are available as something that's obviously available if you make the proper arrangements. And instead of going through the time and money of going through a construction project, I recommend that you use a school site.
Thank you. That's a good idea. Next, Marlo neighbor? Welcome again, Marlo.
I know. I, I'm back. I'm sorry. So obviously, I live on Bishop also, so I, I would just, I understand what you're saying about the meeting space. Completely get that. I do community outreach for a living. We always need space and we're always looking for space. And having something at city hall is the best idea. I love that. I also did participate in the community foundation for a number of years and we always held the boat parade party in here. So I know, I, I love this building. I'm glad we have it to use it. And I know it would be great if there were more areas to do that. But a second story kind of is a detriment to our neighborhood, so I echo everything they said. And then to, to, you know, to reiterate what you're saying about thinking outside the box. Aside from the school, you know, I thought when the Post had their whole remodel, you know, they, they touted having that extra room up there for the use of the city. So why aren't we, it was one of the things that they told us as neighbors that, oh, please let us do this because, you know, we're gonna have this extra little room up there. And I know it's like 14, 15 people, whatever. That's, that's an option to be used. The school, again. And then the other, the other option that, you know, you were talking about the building next door, it came up for sale. Well, when one of those spaces becomes available, why not move the library over there and knock a wall down and use the library for additional meeting space? I mean, think about all the different options we have here. We have that whole office building. Those guys don't stay there forever. You know, people might move out. Use the space. Rent it. That's a worthy, I get that, you know, that's a worthy expense, I would say, if you need the extra space to do something like that. So again, please think outside the box. I appreciate that comment. But two stories, we've been through enough on Bishop Circle. Please leave us alone. Thank you.
Actually, you know... Excuse me. We had, we had some scheduling conflicts with the law enforcement advisory committee a few months back and we thought outside the box and went down to the Toronto Water District. They also have a meeting room. And as was mentioned, there are, you know, school meeting rooms, you know, even school meeting rooms that are just outside the city. Maybe what we could do is start putting together a list of those so that as folks come to us wanting to have a room, if we don't have a room for them, maybe we can say, well, you know, you might contact the Water District and, you know, or the, use the school district's boardroom or whatever, if we could work something out with them, so...
The schools are utilized greatly. A lot, a lot, yes. So they, these are, these are...
Are they using the, the admin building, though?
Oh, no. They use, they use the schools. They use the multipurpose rooms in the schools.
I'm suggesting they could us use perhaps the admin building over at Catell in Handy.
Oh, you know, they don't need to because there is more than enough room.
So we don't need additional meeting rooms in Villa Park?
But the library isn't gonna go to the school. You know, it can't because it's during the day, because those meetings have to be done at night and things like that. But I think it's important that we have this discussion because there are many people in the community who do want a community center and sometimes the answer's no. And, and unless we have this discussion, you can't answer that as no. So instead of having that wish list that, you know, one day we're gonna, you know, own the property or the, in front of us, which is the parking lot, to be able to expand our Halloween fest, we gotta, sometimes we have to say no. And that was a discussion at some point, that we were gonna purchase that parking lot right in front there. So it would be ours and obviously that hasn't occurred.
That'll be one expensive 16 parking...
Do you remember that? Exactly. So I think sometimes it's nice to have this so we can kind of put that off the shelves and say, you know, it's just not there.
Maybe one in the audience probably even know that the parking in front of city hall is not owned by us. It's owned by the property that owns the Post.
We have an easement to, for access.
But, but, yes, we have an easement.
But regarding the second story, I just want to make sure I understand. When we changed the housing element and we made this building next door, we made that multi, multifacetedness, did we do that to Public Works, too?
So it's zoned per parcel?
Uh huh.
So, yes, we did.
Public Works is zoned right now for second story.
Yeah, this is, we're all on one parcel.
And that was done a couple of years ago. We're not doing that, but that was done. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. I remembered it correctly.
And this is by no means approved by the housing element yet either.
It's not approved.
Because it could come back. There's, we have other options possibly available, too. So that would not, we might have to do an, an alternative to this site or this site adjacent to this as well. So is any other comment from council? I'll call again for the public comment. Any other folks that would like to speak on this matter? Could I suggest that we encourage folks to give us some ideas? Anything wrong with that, Jared? Okay, and direct them to you for inclusion. We can look at this at the next meeting and see if there's any other ideas that come up. You see Javar current, I think it's very good to, to look at what we already own and, and look at that. And the other closely allied entity in town, of course, is the Water District. You guys, a good, a good call, Bob.
Yeah, and we're gonna have an inn with Water District.
You know some folks down there. So that's true. With that, mayor, mayor and council member matters. We're gonna move on to item 11. First of all, I attended, as I said earlier, the Orange County Sanitation District Open House on 8/13. Tomorrow night, I'm going to the board meeting for the Orange County Sanitation District. That's all I have to report this month. Bill?
Well, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Mills on his election, if you will, to the Toronto Water Board, District 3. Am I correct?
Yes.
The District 3, and he...
It's not official.
Well, it's official. There'd be, it's official. There was no one running against him, so he won. It was good.
Thank you. Thank you. Bob?
Nothing to report this month.
I do have a comment on this one. I intend to resign my pro temp position at the next meeting and therefore I'd like to agendize it to have an election for that position. And I'd just like to explain very briefly why. If you all remember when we had the elections for that position, one of my comments was, I'm probably not going to be here. And so it really doesn't make a lot of sense for me to take the pro temp position. And I was the swing vote on my own election. And my comment was, I'm only taking this because I'm so frustrated with the situation with council right now that I'm not really in a position to vote for anybody else, so I took it. But I, I will not be here next time. And I think it would be appropriate that the existing council have the opportunity to review that and let the mayor make his call and, and let us vote on that as though we had done it before, if you will. It just does not make sense for me to, for me to carry on. And I think this council ought to have the opportunity to visit that issue. So if you can agendize that for the next calendar meeting, I'll, I'll be resigning and we can, and we can move forward.
Resigning your position on the council?
No, not on the council. I'm just gonna resign my pro temp capacity. No, I'll uphold my council obligations, but when I took it, I really wasn't... No, I'll uphold my council obligations, but when I took it, I really wasn't seeking it